Well, good evening. Today is March 18th, 2024. You're part of the six o'clock meeting for the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. We are grateful that you have joined us tonight, whether here in person or if you're among the millions that watch us every other week. Yeah, there you go. We are glad you're here tonight. We begin our meetings, as always, with a tradition of we're going to have a prayer. And if our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, will come forward, this is called a solemnizing prayer, and I define this each time. So you understand solemnizing prayer means that this is for the commissioners. It's not for you. We look for wisdom from the best place we know. And we make decisions quite often that stump us. And so we ask for wisdom as we make these decisions. And our chaplain's going to ask for that here in a minute. Following that, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Let's pray. What we've come to today, have this meeting tonight, your Lord, in behalf of our county commissioners, your Lord. As they start this meeting, Lord, pray you give them the wisdom indeed to make the right decisions, do the things that need to be done, your Lord. Thank for the preparations been made for this meeting and the planning down the road. We thank for what they've done there, Lord. Pray you give them wisdom tonight. Pray you encourage their hearts. Strengthen them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Chaplain Taylor, thank you, as always, for being with us. All right, I've got some changes to the agenda. And so I'll work through these quickly. We've got one, two, three, we've got five additions. We're going to add as consent item Q. Authorize a veteran's social center to use the staging of Old Foo Line Court for their second year celebration on April 6th. As item R, we're going to add an item to authorize a veteran's social center to use chairs and tables if needed during their celebration on April 6th. Also add consent item S. Authorize a county manager to issue a pay study request for proposal RFP for all Rowan County Public Safety Departments, including Sheriff Department Emergency Services, Fire Marshal, Emergency Medical Services, Emergency Management and Telecommunications, and Animal Services. We'll add consent item T. Authorize a county manager to issue a staffing study request for proposal RFP for the Rowan County Sheriff's Office. And consent U, an incidental command trailer federal appropriation request. In the deletion category, we are going to delete item 3E. It's actually D, 3D. We'll remove that. So with those six changes, do we have a motion to approve those changes?
No move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, thank you. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the consent agenda as amended. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment, period. Sheriff Travis Allen.
Just one quick thank you to the board. And if you remember last year, in the budget, you gave us a criminal detective to do child abuse and sex crimes in that budget. I want everybody on Wednesday night at 10 o'clock, set your DVRs for Channel 9 WSOC TV. They're doing a one-hour program on the operation that they were embedded with us in last week in a local ring that we were trying to do a study on what human trafficking looked like in Rowan County. And we were able to, during that, during that operation, make arrest to a gentleman out of Charlotte who trafficked a 16-year-old girl in Rowan County who was reported missing nationally. We were able to recover her to her and her family. And the detectives did a fantastic job. And one of the lead detectives on that was a detective that you guys helped fund last year in the budget. So the Channel 9 was embedded in that operation with us, live, inside and outside the local hotel that we used. And they're going to do a whole one hour. They were so impressed with the investigation and story that they're doing a one-hour show devoted to that Wednesday night at 10 o'clock. So this Wednesday night, so.
Channel 9 WSOC.
Yes, sir, out of Charlotte. And that's a big, a big thing, thank you to you because you allowed us to have that position that can start looking into some of those things. We, we never in our wildest dream would have thought we would have found a juvenile that fast in our first operation. But we, we had a lot of good success in that. We had several ladies and men respond. Our goal was not to arrest people. Our goal was to get information from them. We made sure everybody that was there was there of their own free will and accord, that they were not being trafficked, that they, they were doing it on their own. So, but we did come across a 16-year-old that was being trafficked out of Charlotte. So we're very, we're very happy. And a part of that is your credit to the board because you funded that position that allowed us to be able to do that. And thank you very much. So I just wanted to reach out to everybody in the crowd, watch that on Channel 9 at Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item A. Mr. Craig. Authorize county manager to grant sewer easement to Salisbury Rowan Utilities on parcel number 477091. Welcome. Thank you, Craig.
Good evening. We've got some potential development off of Grace Church Road. And they have came to us asking if we would grant them a easement in order to serve their property with a sewer line. This property is at the jail annex. It is a 30-foot easement with a 10-foot temporary construction easement. And what will happen is the developer, if they do develop the property, would then build the sewer line that connects to their property. Salisbury Rowan Utilities would inspect that line. And at the time that they would accept the line as a public main, that's when we would have the, the easement would be granted to Salisbury Rowan Utilities because it would be a public main. But we have evaluated the property, me and a county attorney, and tried to look at it from every way if it would adversely impact our, our property in being able to develop it further. And there's, because it's located within a buffer zone of property setback, we don't feel like it will have any future impacts for our property to be able to develop the annex further.
All right, any questions for Craig? All right, thank you, man. All right, we have a motion to authorize county manager to grant a sewer easement on real property owned by Rowan County on Grace Church Road, parcel number 477091, to Rowan, Salisbury Rowan Utilities. Packet. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Craig, thank you. All right, we have an item for Project Light. Elise, who's going to talk about this? Mike, you?
Yeah, I think myself and Aaron.
Okay.
Basically, you know, this kind of ties in with Sheriff's talking about earlier. You know, last year, we talked about working with Project Light to see what we can do to help battle human trafficking here. And one of the first things that came up was going through some of their stuff was they needed more space and how much they spent out for overhead for that every month. And so we have a space that's coming open. It's actually already open out at West End Plaza. We'd like to move them out, let them move out there. Put their facilities there so that'll be their, their headquarters. It'll help them out, give them some visibility and then provide for them. I can't bring my attachments up. Something's going on here with my iPad. So I'm not really sure what's all in there. I think the lease is in there. And, but the other thing that Jim had, was asking if we could help them with is, if you know, they're going to go where the old Bath &amp; Body Works store currently are just moved out from. Obviously, from what they're dealing with, they need a little bit more privacy. And that's an open front. So I wanted to at least bring it up if we could help them enclose that area, maybe put a door on the front for them so they have some privacy for the individuals they're going to have in there and obviously the topic. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's something that our maintenance people can do or something.
It's not.
It's not.
But I think we can help them.
So as part of this, you know, I like for us to also be able to do that for them. And I don't know what would go there. I mean, even if it's a glass wall with a door and shades or if it's a wall or whatever. But they do need to have some privacy there for that. So I think the lease is, is in the thing. And this is basically the lease we gave, that we have for the honor guard, Veterans Honor Guard. And I know Jim's here. If Jim has anything he'd like to.
Jim, anything you want to add?
Excited.
You're going to talk up here?
We're excited about the possibility of being able to move into Salisbury. We're having a lot of activity now with folks in Salisbury. And not that we don't like Rockwell. Rockwell's a great town. And they're going to allow us to leave our sign on Main Street in Rockwell even when we move, which we're excited about that with the 10,000 cars that go by there every day. But this would be, I think would be a great move forward for Project Light to be able to be in the Salisbury area. And I appreciate any support that you folks would, would help us with.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Manager and Attorney, how, how should we word this? Put in charge of working out the construction piece?
I think if you want to approve the lease and then an additional motion to authorize the manager to outfit the front of the.
Unit, yeah.
Thank you. The, the unit to provide privacy. And that, you think that's okay, Jay?
All right, Mike, you want to make, make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the lease for Project Light.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second motion?
A move that we authorize the manager to wear Project Light to outfit the front of the suite.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Jim, thank you for what you're doing.
I have a question for the county manager. What is the dollar limitation that we have without having to put it out for bid?
Five.
So currently, anything over 5,000 should get quotes. Anything over 90 would need to have formal bid. So we're going to be in the range where we need to get quotes.
Think so? To put up a petition wall?
I'm going to say it's going to be over 5,000. You think?
I'll go by there tomorrow and look at it, get back to you.
All right, Mr. Muir, welcome back again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this particular item that the board is going to consider as being asked to consider tonight is a continuation of a legislative hearing that was conducted February 19th. I would ask the clerk if at one of our previous meetings, did they close the hearing and then, okay, thank you. So that from a order of operations that, that has been completed. So what I'm going to do tonight is just briefly go through the text one more time, tell you what the committee had proposed. There's some suggested amendments that staff has added to the text based on a lot of what you heard at the public hearing or legislative hearing, if you may recall that. And then the last portion, the applicant has proposed some modifications to the hours of operation. And as any good staff would do, we've, we've commented on that and proposed perhaps some clarifications to it as well. So any questions before I begin? Okay, great. So if you remember, we started out by amending the definition of a go-kart. Really, what we've done is, is taking that specific definition that applies only to a quarter midget car. We've eliminated the size and the width of that, but the engine size is still the same at 253 cc's, which is around 15 to 16 horsepower. But we still also include that definition. But it becomes more a general definition of what a go-kart is. Then we came up with a couple of new terms for motorsports racing complex, which is the crux of what we're going to talk about. A racing activity track, we've defined the activities that occur on a track. It can be a strip. It can be an oval. It can be dirt. It can be a number of things, but it's a racing activity track. And then we're talking about a TIA, which is an engineer's study to look at the traffic impacts that the project is likely to produce and just defining what a vehicle trip is. And that's a travel between two points. So just kind of some ho-hum stuff there. But then we get into what we're really going to be talking about, and that's the conditional district standards. Right now, any type of racing track, whether it's go-kart, drag strip, motor speedway are all considered or only considered as a special use. That means we get into the quasi judicial hearing. What we're talking about tonight is a conditional district process where we have a legislative hearing. These proposals go before the planning board. A special use permit does not. Legislative hearing comes through the planning board and then to this board. So you get, as Jay likes to say, a lot of times, two swipes at the apple there. You find out what, what the issues are. If there are some concerns, the applicant needs to modify their application if they want it to be successful. And then come to this board with hope to be their final proposal. So when we talk about the uses, I would impress upon you that they're all race-related. The other thing about a motorsports complex is that it's also intended to have some other things along with it. You know, they could have a restaurant. They could have t-shirt sales. They could have, you know, some, some equipment repair, some business uses along with it. It's not just one track. It's got to be multiple tracks. The lot size is premised on that. You see here, if you've got motor speedway and one accessory use, which we would say is a tier two or a tier three, you get 50% reduction for those tier two and tier three uses when they are paired with a tier one. And the commentary or the ordinance text below there kind of goes into that. But generally, you would say that if you've got a motor speedway and a go-kart track, instead of saying 70 acres, you get 60 acres. You get a 50% reduction on that tier two or tier three type of track. However, if you pair a motor speedway and a drag strip, you got to have 100 acres. It only benefits them when they pair it with a secondary one. Location, they got to have frontage on a state road or build their access to a state standard road to get to it. Traffic, this just denotes that if you have more than 3,000 trips, you're going to produce what's called a TIA. That is an engineered study. If you have less than 3,000 but more than 1,000 trips, you're going to do kind of a modified study. And the term escapes me now, but they're, they're becoming more and more prevalent with DOT. You can just work with them on, on the requirements. But the important thing I would tell you is that those are going to be part of the application. You're going to see those when you're considering the application. It's not one of those things where the neighbors or the public are going to come and talk to you about traffic. And all you've got from staff is, well, we anticipate it's going to generate this many trips. The TIA or I think they call it a technical memorandum will address what the impacts are, whether it's turn lanes, new signalization, you know, those kind of things. Those are going to be part of the application that comes to the board. Lighting, it basically allows the, the applicant to determine where the lighting is. But the important thing is that it doesn't shine on adjoining property. Setbacks are 300 feet from the side and rear property lines. When they adjoin the residential district, they, they go down to 200 feet if it's a non-residential district. Okay? Fencing around the perimeter of the complex. A type B is required buffer along the side and rear property lines. When it adjoins a residential category, that type B is an 80-foot buffer. If it adjoins a non-residential category, that's a 20-foot buffer. The hours of operation, I'm going to skip over lines 10 through 14 because we're going to talk a little bit about what the applicant has proposed there, unless you, anybody has any questions about it? Because I think we're going to modify them. Muffled race vehicles, if you're on a tier one and tier two track, you have to have a muffler, although we do, let's see. If, if the facility existed before, before the proposed amendment, they can continue to race without the use of mufflers. And that's on the, the tier one or tier two track, whatever they have. So the noise standards, the applicant is going to provide a noise study by an acoustical engineer that certifies that the track is going to comply with the county's noise standards. Parking requirement is one space per four vehicles and goes into some detail about how a seat is defined since a lot of the seats in this particular case are bleachers. Comes from the North Carolina Building Code. And this is the modification to the table of uses. It's somewhat hard to see, but you'd see here that a motorsports racing complex is a conditional district in the CBI district. That's the only proposal. And as I mentioned earlier, there are special uses for those individual type of facilities in the CBI or the industrial district. So there've been some, one thing I failed to mention. And this came about because of some of the comments at the public hearing. This is as it relates to lot size. And so for those tracks that may have multiple uses on a track, what we've said is that for purposes of determining required acreage, when more than one, should say, type of racing activity occur on a single track, the higher tier group shall apply. So if they came in and say, oh, you know, we've only, we're only racing go-karts. Only need 20 acres, but you know, they're racing things that are more than 253 cc's. We would consider that a motor speedway, and so you need 50 acres. So that's just a clarification. Right, so lines. Two through 16. That's a lot better, isn't it? Yes, okay. So this is what was proposed by the applicant. Hours of operation for racing, training, or testing may vary according to the zoning designations of properties that are adjacent to the complex. A complex that is bordered by a minimum of 55% commercial or industrial zone properties at the time of approval of this text amendment may maintain the following hours of operation. Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 10, Thursday, 8 to 11, Friday and Saturday, 8 to midnight, and then Sunday, noon until 9 p.m. For those facilities that are not bordering commercial or industrial property, the hours per track, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 8, Friday and Saturday closes at 10 p.m., and Sunday it's the same. At staff, we looked at this and just had a couple of comments. We think tend to clarify this and what, what we would suggest. And this would replace, I believe it's criteria nine in the text as it is now. But we would say that hours of operation for activities are based on the zoning designation of properties contiguous to the motorsports complex at the time a conditional district application is submitted. Complex that is bordered by a minimum of 60% commercial or industrial zone properties. And we would measure this by the total linear footage along the common property line. Essentially, the boundary of that property shall maintain the following hours of operation. And, and we thought there are hours that they have proposed were satisfactory and left them. But just clarification on the part for those sites that don't border commercial or industrial, we're just saying that hours of operation at a complex not, where contiguous to less than 60% commercial or industrial district zone property shall maintain the following hours. And those fall in line with the 8 to 8 and 8 to 10 and 12 to 9 p.m. So the properties or the applications that border, bless you, at least 60% or more commercial or industrial zone property get the addition of, of later hours of operation during the week and on the weekend. So that's. That's what we've got for you tonight. One thing I did not do, I did not put the planning board's statement of consistency in the pack, and I apologize.
Yeah. Do you have one?
I don't. Is there one, is there one on the, the packet? There's one in the staff memo, I do believe. I just failed to include that. My apologies. So. Some of this is plowing old ground again. We've added a new wrinkle or two. Any questions?
Page 371.
That in your packet? Okay. Okay.
All right, any other questions for Ed? All right, I'll offer up a statement of reasonableness. ZK 04-23 is reasonable, appropriate, and necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County previously envisioned by the east and west land use plans. And reasonable and appropriate based on the following. This is zoning type. And secondly, there is potential for other similar development in the county. Furthermore, the adoption of ZTA 04-23 is deemed an amendment to the east and west use, uh, land use plans.
Sorry, I missed that, but can I ask you one question? We just asked that, that approval include lines 18 through, the staff proposed text amendment to replace that. Did you say that?
Yeah, I was doing the statements first and then we.
I'm sorry.
All right, so I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then make a motion that we approve ZTA 04-23 with the changes found in lines 18 through 33.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Ed, thanks for your patience on this. I know it's been hanging over y'all's head for a while, so thanks for. Hey, it's a. Actually, it reduces your hourly, doesn't it? All right, and thank you, guys. They say you've been great to work with. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, did, did we make quite clear to the public that this is for any new corporations that are getting started in the racing business?
Well, it would be new and if any expansions.
And any, any expansions. So, so we cannot change what is there at this point in time.
These folks have an existing facility. In fact, one of them told me it's the longest operating drag strip in North Carolina. What year? Not quite as old as some that I know, but.
Well, I've already told you, George and I used to race horses up there years ago.
So, so yeah, if, they don't have to abide. They don't have to do, if they want to change and add racing operations, they would have to come under this, and so you may choose to do that. Others may choose not to do that. What they're doing, right? All right, thank you all. Aaron, oh no.
No.
Financial reports.
Start with February's cumulative expenditures. We were up 11.6 million or 11.1% over the same time on 23. Um, then looking at the.
Then looking at the revenues. Cumulative revenues were up 3.3 million or 2.2% over FY '23. January's property taxes. Cumulative on the next slide. Are up 17.9 million or 20.5%. Oh, he's advanced one extra there. Go back one, please. And then cumulative sales tax is roughly flat to last month and last year.
It was coming.
Exactly. Yeah, which is a $200,000 increase or 1.2%. And then when you look at the month, because we talked about this last time too, when he flips the slide here. We had the big, where they had the error last month, so they only gave us the difference. But as you saw in the cumulative, it kind of averaged out to be flat. The other thing that I need to make you aware of in this, so these were down quite a bit, of course, but average, I think we're good. Is in March, when you see the peaks in March that are on this report, they were related to the hold harmless, Medicaid hold harmless that we get. We got notified this past week that we're not going to be getting that this year, and so it's about a $2 million hit from last year's March report.
Is it tied to expansion?
Know that it's.
No, it's tied to Medicaid. I don't know all the details yet. Well, you're talking about that. I thought you were talking about budgets.
No, no, no. I think it's, I think it's connected to that. Yes, they were holding money, they would hold money from our sales tax. And there was a gap, and we were one of the counties that was getting money for a gap, and they've determined that we aren't getting the gap anymore, so.
Which means we, we may, going into the budget year, have to project a $2 million shortfall right out of the gate, which will, is not good at all for the departments.
But yeah, we got that notification just last week, so we'll get more information on it, but I just want to share that.
Education lottery will kick in. A little bit more. All right, any red flags?
Issue with the hold harmless, I don't think so. Yeah.
Ready to do your thing?
Yep. Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.